Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting the Mills River Board's order. And if you would, I'd ask you to join me in standing for the President. Okay, this time I'd like to ask if there are any adjustments or additions to this agenda. For the Planning Board members, you have received an email copy of our previous meetings minutes via email, and you should have had a chance to look over those. Are there any adjustments that you feel need to be made? Okay, if there are none, we'll take a motion to approve this minutes. Okay, Wayne, Mr. Carmen, goes to approve the minutes. And second by Cheryl. Okay, all in favor? That was a unanimous approval. Right, do we have any public comments tonight?
I don't believe we do. I'm gonna ask Sue real quick.
No.
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 No. Okay, so we're gonna move on into our old business. And I want to say before we get started, just a special welcome to everyone who's here tonight. As you all know, we, as a planning board, invited town council to join with us tonight for this meeting. So I appreciate Councilman Austin Kimmel Snyder for being here in person. And I do believe Mayor Davis is joining us via Zoom as well as Councilwoman Caskey. So thank you guys for joining in. And also I'd like to welcome Captain Starling from the Sheriff's Department. I think that's right, Captain. And Ron Justice, who is the legal counsel for the Sheriff's Department. So they are both here with us. The old business that we are looking at tonight is the consideration of a noise ordinance. And as you all know, the planning board has been tasked with developing a noise ordinance that would allow businesses in Mills River to continue to operate, yet at the same time offering some reasonable protections to the citizens of Mills River. So I think we all can agree that for any ordinance to be effective, one of the main objectives is to have high enforcement. And without enforcement, an ordinance pretty much just is a piece of paper. So that's kind of what brought us to our meeting tonight. We, as a planning board, before we move forward, wanted some clarification of the current roles of the deputies that are assigned to Mills River per agreement with the Sheriff's Office. So what I'd like to do is kind of open up with some questions for whichever, you know, Mr. Justice or Captain Starling to answer. And I'm not sure which one of you is gonna help and play this game, but it might work better if you come to the podium, because there's gonna be the main person. I hope you all came with questions. I have some of my own, so I'll just kind of ready the water. We'll get them out in there, and hopefully that will lead to some other questions. So, of course you want.
Mr. Justice, touch on the presentation.
Okay.
I hear that now.
Awesome.
Questions?
All right, can you go ahead and run through the PowerPoint?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I answer someone's question?
You know, did I have some time to open it up?
Yes.
Okay, I am Ron Justice. I am the President of the Sheriff's Office.
You can keep going, sir.
This is regarding the county noise ordinance. You're chapter 18 of the Henderson County Code of Ordinances. Jurisdiction is currently applied to all incorporated areas of Henderson County and to the incorporated areas that have requested that be enforced, requests enforcement by and through the local Board of Government Board and approval about the Henderson County Board of Commission. Any incorporated individual town must specifically request enforcement, and it has to go through the Henderson County Commission before we enforce. What type of noises are prohibited? If anything, the biggest part of these is unreasonably loud or disturbing, and these are what are called the reasonable person standard. If it is unreasonably loud, disturbing, of such character and intensity duration, to be detrimental to health, safety, and welfare, a person of ordinary reasonable person, ordinary, from this, is basically your reasonable person, not somebody who may be especially sensitive to it. For example, you have somebody who is a shift worker. Well, not being a problem when somebody works in first shift, may cause a problem when somebody works in third shift. So you're looking at the reasonable person of ordinary, from this. Part of the fact that they look at, by the time of the day that's happening, the proximity to noise to residential structures. Is it something that happened all day long, and something only for certain periods of time? Is it something that has been enhanced by some sort of device to make it louder, such as some sort of loudspeaker or something? What's the nature and zoning of the area? Is it very close in residential, or is it other type of zone? Also, but not related to normal operation of the business or other requirements for it, or something, you know, is probably being used for other purposes. They do have something that's sort of sounds like a presumption, that there are certain noises that they're on presuming that it's going to be a noise violation. And some of those include such things as loud language, yelling, shouting, whether that's amplified congregation of people at parties, damaging the people from which noise emanates. If you're keeping birds, animals, which on a repeated basis will make noise. In our county, we want it to be at some time, such as for a period of 10 minutes or a minimum of 30 minutes or more, which would cause a noise disturbance. Also, playing a television, radios, microphones, anything else between 11:00 and 7:00 a.m. You have operation of the automobile, motorcycle, or other vehicles that will cause grating, grinding, screeching of tires, anything like that. If you're working like a garage where they're rebuilding motor vehicles or working on them, especially between hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., which will cause rather disturbing noises. Also, you have a motor vehicle where it's got a bad muffler, with mufflers in there, or they've set it something which is gonna make it intended to be louder than if it's already living. That would be something to be, into the violation. Also, if there's any excessive noise next to a school, institutional learning, library, court, anything like that, hospital, church, human services, or anything that unreasonably appears to be working in such institution. And the firing, shooting, discharging, if it's for the sole purpose of making noise or disturbance. For every rule, there's also an exception. And our county noise ordinance is also has exceptions. Some of them, noise made by dogs from being trained, there's exceptions to the noise ordinance. But also from the operation of being facilitated partly licensed by agriculture, that division is a kennel, pet shop, or anything like that on the animal welfare. Noise associated with legal operations of any powers, or association legally established, this would be if there was a right of lanes associated with their farms. Of course, yes. This here. On the fourth, on the fourth paragraph. Yes. This here. What is improperly licensed farm by part of the agriculture? Maybe there's only other, these are the back slides. There are any of them. So what is the definition of paragraph two? This is any facility that is properly licensed by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. As a boarding kennel, pet shop would be an important animal. That means it's got to have shelters or pet shops, you know, else. Well, it says there's a period after the Department of Agriculture. Okay, comma. So if you have a farm that is not, is it, it's in the farm. And so they're out here, they pay at 10:00 p.m., right? They're making all these noises. So they are out of compliance with this. Let me get to this. Okay, I'm sure you're there.
Roger, I don't think that paragraph talks about agriculture in that sense, because it's referring to those that are in the veterinary divisions was talking specifically about animals, not about other agricultural functions, the way I'm reading it.
You look at third paragraph, it says noise associated resulting from operations of construction, commercial, industrial, agricultural, and fishing operations, except for electronic, we add five sounds, that's particularly in the industry. So that covers your agricultural. Okay, so which one takes precedence? This slide and one before. One before deals with kennels and pet shops, this is built by agriculture.
Both of the slides are under exceptions. So the previous slide and this slide are both the exceptions. So agricultural, the, the, except where it's written, for.
But, but not to beat the horse, couldn't say. The other slide said properly licensed a farm. Properly licensed by the Department of Agriculture. So that tells me that my farm needs to be properly licensed. According to that slide, that this one says that it'll pay. Now, this one, this one talks about a different pet shop, boarding kennel, pet shop dealer. The other one, this just deals about boarding pet kennels, boarding kennels, pet shop, or animal dealer. Doesn't talk about agriculture, agriculture covered under the exemption in number 10. Which would be.
Roger, this one is a, can you go back just a second? I'm sorry. This, this is a facility that's licensed by the veterinary division of the Department of Agriculture. So this is specifically talking about, this, this really wouldn't apply to the farm, as Ron said, this is boarding kennels, pet shops. Because of that comma there is specifically talking about the veterinary, the Department of Agriculture doesn't just oversee farms. It also has the veterinary division that oversees the pet shops, the meatworks, and things like that. That's what that one's referring to.
Okay, I disagree with that side. Okay. Right, this is one where if there are any intentions that are being planned to say that they're, hey, I have an intention for this. It would be from the person who is claiming the intention. They would have what's called the burden of proof, of proving that it was, that the exception of farms. Or, for instance, let me go back up. If you look at second paragraph, one of the exceptions is noise resulting from farming operations, including non-limited noise generated by machinery, equipment, and farming. Okay, so there's your farming exception located right there. But if you look down, you've got a next one, noise sources associated with any event that's held recognition of a community celebration of national, state, county events, or public festivals. If somebody decided to have something, some sort of large festival or something, which was causing a lot of, they said it was associated with some sort of, you know, community or national celebration. Example I use on teaching is, I use the example from period of religion. I talked up the church with the flying spaghetti monster, where everybody walked leaves and flying spaghetti, whereas colliders often have photographs for drivers' laws. If there's an event that says that we want to have celebration, celebrating the invasion of colliders, and we believe that we're gonna need to bang them 24 hours straight. This is an example where you make an exception for some sort of community celebration, or it could be down with next one, maybe some camp that's going on, they're wanting to do it. They would be, want to have the burden of proof to show that they have the exception. Right? But yes, your agriculture does have an exception. If there are any complaints, what has to happen? A report can be made to the sheriff's office, and the sheriff's office will investigate it. If the investigation shows there's a violation, the deputy has the authority to have a written complaint be made, and they can attend criminal process with violation. They can issue a citation for civil, civil penalty, or other enforcement measures, which is allowed. But the criminal process can only be attained by moving to the sheriff's office. So you couldn't have a citizen filing a complaint, going down the magistrate. This is where our criminal comes. The order to set firmly law enforcement can do it. Law enforcement has the option of issuing a civil citation or criminal process. Protection included for individuals who think that they may have complaints filed against them. If there's a, if there's somebody files false complaints and false reports, until officers investigating, that's a class three misdemeanor, and they can be charged with that. If there's frivolous, unfounded complaints, and somebody continually files frivolous, unfounded complaints to harass someone or interfere with their functions, whether it be one of their exceptions that they're allowed to have, they can be charged with a class three misdemeanor also. This one's gonna be hard to read. Basically, yes.
I got a quick question.
Yes.
Violent false reports.
Yes.
So what determines a false report? In other words, if we use the example of Roger. Okay, if Roger has a party every Saturday night, and he's supposed to be playing his music at 11:00. At 11:15, I probably share the party. Well, let's say they get there by 12:00, and he's already turned his radio down. And I call it every Saturday. Every Saturday, I go up there, and he's not, the music's not on, I don't know it. Is that false? How do you distinguish what a false report is? What's your criteria?
It's thing called officer discretion. Our officers train, their experience, their, and their disciplinary discretion of what actually they're gonna take. We can't, we can't describe and detail everything that's put to them every, you know, every call and yell on. It depends on the training experience, and then they're also. Or would you be charged with an unfounded complaint if we can't, if you keep calling, or you keep coming out there? I don't think so. Okay, this is one where if it was clearly shown that it was for a malicious reason. If there's, let's say that you and Roger didn't get along, and he cuts off the music at 11:00 o'clock, but you crank up your radio, you call 911, and say, can't you hear the screaming player? Do we respond three times like that? And it's found out that, you know, we don't leave an angle, we're still sitting there. We hear nothing that hears out, but we hear the radio blaring, and we didn't want to call back. That might be where, might be frivolous, unfounded, that's probably where we do that. So we have to depend on discretion, officer, and trial experience for their decision.
Thank you.
All right, this one, top part of it, what it's talking about is there's noises that's coming from like a dog. Dog's continuously barking or something, allowing us to go out and take the dogs to the animal shelter. We see something called, I don't call it as ever having confused this, but it is a tool that we have in the toolkit, basically, that's true. And again, it talks about the penalties for individuals who have a false report, were frivolous, run down the plate, the class three misdemeanor. And fined about more than $500. Most all of their county ordinance violations are class three misdemeanor, which means that you can't get an active sentence on class three misdemeanor on this week. You can't go to jail for more than 10 days unless you have a five-month prior conviction. A class three misdemeanor, you're more likely to get some sort of fine, court costs. Could be something a judge simply say that we'll, you know, we'll bring the team judgment, and not the person who's helping so long as it doesn't happen to you.
Excuse me, Mr. Justice, before we go on, I just want to remind everyone that our clerk is in a different room, so please identify yourself if you have questions or if you have some questions to give. Forgot the certification, so they know this people.
And if you take away the thing, the noise is based upon a reasonable person standard, not individuals who may have particular susceptibility, even an individual who is a day sleeper. And I said earlier, a day sleeper is somebody who is at 7:00 p.m. Individuals who don't like having any noise whatsoever, or anyone who is solitude and property. A reasonable person standard. Some ones that will have fewer restrictions, such as your businesses, your agriculture, things that have the exceptions, and with fewer restrictions. The listed factors which allow the noise to be evaluated. I think the factor to be used, see if it is a noise that could be charged upon, or if there's some action to be taken. And also, only a deputy can take the criminal process for violation. And there's also penalties for false reports or numerous unfounded complaints. Questions?
If I can, I want to move back up just a little bit with some questions that don't even pretend to be the noise ordinance per se. And the main reason is just to, yeah, anyone who's watching us on Facebook or joining Zoom, and even just some of you here in this meeting, you may not exactly know the roles that we are in agreement with the Henderson County Sheriff's Department, that they, they will be a part of. So I just want to go back and clarify some of that. So some of the, question number one that I have here is specifically, how many deputies do we have assigned to the three issues?
Of course, you know, the deputy.
The way that the contract with the town order of the sheriff's office is, the sheriff's office, we have five actual deputies that work in the town of Mills River. And then they're, were funded for another, and that gets you the investigators, all the equipment, any specialty units, SWAT team, negotiators, things like that. That's what comes from that sixth person that's lined out in the contract. So there's actually five deputies. We have Jim Blair that works Monday through Friday during the day, which most people in the town are very familiar with, Jim, being out in the night, he does a terrific job. And then we have four different patrol shifts at the sheriff's office. And there's one Mills River deputy assigned to patrol shift. That way, we have 24-hour coverage here in the town, plus Jim during the day, Mondays through Fridays. So it gives you two deputies out. And on top of that, we have an area guard for seven and eight. Mills River calls it the area seven and eight. By the way, we have our patrol area as well, so you have the other deputies here as well in the event.
Okay, so Jim is here. When, when he is on duty, Monday through Friday during the day. He's, he is in the town limits on patrol.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so your four other deputies who, you said there's one per patrol shift assigned.
Right.
They aren't necessarily.
They are supposed to be here.
Within the town limits?
Right.
Okay. That, that was my question. If they were, if they were assigned here, if they were required to be within the town limits, or were they simply required to answer calls within the town limits?
No, they're supposed to be in the town limits. There is exceptions to that, this is what we talked, maybe about every rule. If there's calls that are close to the town limits, and it's, say it's a shooting, or this missed call, it's something, our policy that we require two deputies. But if, if that person's in the area, or our backup will, will be outside, and the victim will have, you know, consequences for us not responding quickly, they would go to those type of calls. So that way, they would be out of town, hopefully for a short time, before they came back.
So currently, since we as a town have not requested re-county commissioners for the county ordinance to be enforced, currently, do deputies assigned to Mills River have any responsibility for noise complaints within the town? What would their, what should their response be at this current time?
Ron, I'll let you touch on it, because I think you did do your presentation.
With a, even if you don't have a noise ordinance, there's, there are certain other general statutes and some of the things that, if you have disorderly conduct, which is pretty much a, can be pretty much a catch-all. There's like seven different enumerated parts to disorderly conduct. But there's also field common law breach of peace. It's a whole common law, carry it out for anyone. And basically, if anybody disturbs the peace and quiet, the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood, or the, of the people, then they can charge with the common law breach of peace. We don't see it a whole lot, but it is, while there's the can use. There can be, if you have vehicles involved, you can have chapter code or vehicle violations, such as if you have a perilous, like, if they're doing burnouts, it could cause a collision with a vehicle. You can have improper muffler, if, if allowed mufflers, if that's, if it is a, an instance in which they're discharging a farm. There's, you know, there can be others on criminal statutes that can be involved with that. But we don't have just a noise ordinance. And one other thing that we can use, the first thing we always use is their presence. If we show up, and then everybody quiet down, even if we don't get out of power, we've done what we're supposed to do, just by presence. We make people voluntarily comply with the law. So here are things we have just to solidify the noise ordinance itself.
So one of the main complaints that we have had in the town of Mills River is not specifically being, you know, party or brawl or anything like that. A lot of it is ankle function for some of our people. And we have had deputies respond in the past to the house of the person, you know, that's called in, so they complain. At that point, is it simply a subjective call on their part as to whether the noise is loud enough that it's disturbing tranquility and peace?
It's, it's the, it's the reasonable, reasonable person, quite, big reasonable person. If they're for the reasonable person, I think. If deputy gets down, then yeah, this is too loud. If it's not like this, you know, quarter mile down the road, it could be, could be a part of just the bottom down the deputy, or what he controls.
Could I ask a question, make a statement? If I'm understanding what you're talking about, this is actually the Henderson County noise ordinance. about, this is actually the Henderson County noise ordinance as it stands.
That's correct.
Now, and what we've been working on here, I believe several towns have been involved in it, pretty much, you know, court decided with it, maybe some changes. And of course, if I understand this correctly, though, if we, as a plan, this is approved, this ordinance we're working with, and if the town council approves it, and if the county commissioners, if the town council approves it, and if the town council has, or the sheriff's department can enforce our ordinance, and if the county commissioner approves, then the deputies can enforce or will enforce what we're talking about here?
We're starting to, starting to fork off here. The commissioners, the commissioners only have to be requested by the, by the town council for the county ordinance. If you enact your own ordinance, then it is an ordinance for the, the town. And if, if the town, if the town council wants enforcement of our ordinance, and they make their push into law enforcement, then we're going to go ahead and provide the best service we can provide. If that is enforcement of the ordinance, it's complies with state federal law, we'll do it.
I was just going to add that, that once the town, once you decide if you want the ordinance, yes, we will enforce the ordinance myself. And, you know, I'll talk about this a little bit. I talked with the sheriff again today, and he is on board with, once you pass the ordinance for the sheriff's office to work in partnership with the town about the enforcement of the noise ordinance. And something to talk about was, like on the civil side of how the, the town wants to enforce the civil penalties, and even if it's the deputies just going out doing the noise meters, you know, whether it's, you know, bull rock or another brewery or whatever business, it's something they complain about, do the readings and, and do a report and pass it on to the town to do enforcement of the civil penalty. If that's the way the ordinance is great. But we will be in partnership with the town to enforce the town ordinance for this.
Okay, I guess that pretty much answers my concern. If all my ifs fall into place, you will enforce it.
Because of the contract we do have with the town to provide the law.
So it wouldn't require you or a man's in contract agreement?
No. Because I believe the way that the contract is written is the sheriff's office will enforce any laws in North Carolina and the town laws is the way that the contracts are. That's my understanding. I just want to remind folks to identify yourselves.
I'm Jim Paul.
Okay, I would like to entertain any additional questions that some of you guys might have. And I'll just, Mr. Justice will let you know, one of the main things that we are trying to decide, and I think we have an idea already, but whether we were going to go with Henderson counties or develop our own. And I think, you know, I think it's safe to say we're going to be developing our own, because Henderson counties doesn't quite do what we need it to be. But it's helpful to know where the sheriff's department stands should we develop our own noise ordinance. So are there other questions either from Cheryl T? Okay, this is Cheryl. Cheryl Genosky here. So my question is, as we are developing our ordinance, will the sheriff's department provide us with guidance saying this is enforceable, this is not enforceable, we don't know, others in that regard?
Cheryl, I think you mentioned this in a moment.
Good point.
All right. I think that's something that the, the planning board, town council has to talk with the town's legal counsel as far as enforcement of that. And then whatever the council planning board come up with, then that's where we'll step in and say we'll enforce this stuff. But I would say you're all legal counsel and, and get those, get the gist of, I've read through the proposed ordinance, and I think everything looks pretty good. But once, y'all have done your part, then we'll step in and help you do that. If that helps faster.
It does, and I appreciate, I guess I was thinking about things like, you know, if we say measurable by a certain device, if you have an opinion about a device that's better or worse, or, you know, something like that, that you would, that from your experience or, or other, other opinions, that you would make that available to us before we go to some sort of final with our ordinance?
Before I came to the sheriff's office, I had eighteen years in criminal defense. And one day I had ten years working here for law enforcement. I had the perspective of going out there trying to handle a situation at two o'clock in the morning, and then have the comfort of depending on my office to log down and discuss it. And over that time, the one thing that I found is that if you have an ordinance that is written so narrowly that there's only X, X number of, X number of things won't fit into this, it's got to be so very narrowly tailored, that sometimes it's not as effective as if you have a reasonable person standard, instead of going with a death pool, you say, death pool reading at this point, at that point. As a defense attorney, one person is, I'm with it, is going to say X number of death pool criteria, five slash probably, when the purchase went last time related, and he definitely tried to do that. And the third player is not here, but it's going to play a big part in this, is the district attorney's office. We can, we can take process, we can pick it there, but the district attorney doesn't feel that it's basic and prosecute. Then there's not much reason else doing it. So I would, one thing I would make is, don't hint at yourself. I say only one half of noise measurement. Look through broad lens at what you might be trying to define as kind of finding noise.
Any other questions? Mr. Campbell?
All right. So this is Brian Campbell. One of the first questions I have is, over the past year, how many citations have you actually written for people violation of noise?
No, we, we can enforce.
No, I'm not talking about the sheriff. I'm talking about the county in general. How many you guys?
I don't have them. Sorry. I don't have those numbers with us tonight. I would say there's very few, because most of the time, once we get caught up to a noise ordinance violation, or somebody, the reason person believes maybe the noise was violated, by the time the deputies get there, most of the time we're dealing with market dogs. So we'll log that information within the handful, of course, that usually falls up to that. I would say there's very few times that we've ever had the right citations, since we've been with this for however many years now, since we kind of come up with one. It's very few and far between. Most of the time, like Mr. Justice was talking about, you know, just the officer presence, they'll turn the music down, you know, do what they can to get the dog to bark in or, of course, don't get them in. And then the verbal warnings. Most of the time we give a verbal warning and we like to deal with it. I think if you want to have more substance on the civil side, from some of the things that I've heard from members of the council, as far as noise ordinance here, is, is more of a civil thing. I guess we'll, we talked about working in collaboration with each other, you know, the deputies going out, going to noise readings, and then being able to pass it on to the town to do the civil enforcement of the town. For criminals citation, there's not been one recently that I can remember.
So this is Randy. So, yes, where, how, how do you go about if you get a call, a complaint call, not one on one call? How do you go about ranking those calls? Which ones? So if you've got, only got five or six that you can, and you've got eight calls, so how do you rank calls?
Life safety is, is number one. So if, if there's a potential for something happening to bad to somebody, you know, whether it's a, it's a high call, whether it's a messy call, if, if life and health, they're going to be priority calls. So then it would go to property. And then we just worry about property. So if you have eight different calls long, and we have a noise ordinance call, it's probably going to go to the bottom of this, just because if there's damage to property or somebody's license, they're responsible.
Okay, so Friday or Saturday night, and how often do you have deputies that would be able to respond to the noise calls that weren't involved with safety in those criteria?
It just depends on the calls, because the way our policy is put down, for officer safety and stuff, depending on the type of call, we may send two deputies to hit their back. So normally, we have nine deputies working this year. So they, Friday or Saturday night, especially in the summertime, you leave one call and go straight to the next one. So there's times, this can be a while before you get a deputy there to answer that call.
If there's any other, basically, if there's any other calls, a noise, a noise call would be at the bottom.
Yes.
Any other questions? Excuse me? Can you come back to the podium?
What?
Did you ask if you could come to the podium?
Yes.
If you need to, you certainly may.
First of all, first of all, I appreciate you guys having us here. Thank you. I'm speaking for myself and as a town councilman. He said, when we sent this issue to the planning board, it is basically one, that's all it was, noise. And it was created by a couple of businesses. And so when we sent this to the planning board, my intentions, my goal, my thinking was something the size of a golf ball. Now it seems like it's involved, it's just something like a basketball. So as I looked at Mr. Justice's presentation, is that the county noise ordinance is six, seven slides, give or take. Well, he said, why can't we narrow this down? Let's make things simple. And so what I'm referring to is that, just to give an example, is that, let's say that you have ABC company, and they're in the music business. So Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, is that they've got to cut, cut amplified music volume at six, seven, eight o'clock at night, whatever the magic number is. Friday night and Saturday night, let's give them an extra hour. I don't want to burden the sheriff's department on going out there with the noise meter walking around and saying, Roger, you're in violation. So back to my point, he said, let's make things simple. So he said, the other thing that, and so I appreciate the presentation, he said, the other thing that caught my attention is that the town is going to go after these people. The sheriff's department can't. Is that right? Is it?
For the civil penalties, then the town is going to have to go after the person we're with.
So that, that's going to mean more staff now. So, you know, is that, we have a bunch of good employees, they work hard to do their jobs, but he said, I'm trying not to burden them with an extra job, but he said, let's think about this. I think that the noise ordinance that I got by email was six, seven, eight pages, Daniel, never had.
Eighteen.
Eighteen pages. So, is that, my thinking is that, why can't we do this on one page? And again, is that on a regular weekday, amplified music stops at nine o'clock, or whatever the number is. The week, the weekend, let's give them an extra hour. He said, I'm trying to weigh, it's the town council's job to weigh the residents' rights and the business rights. So, is that, keep that in mind, is that, that's our job is to represent both the residents and the businesses. So the more that we can keep it simple, simpler, the better off and easier our job. Questions?
And you actually took the words kind of when I read the top of the, my copy of the ordinance, that said, don't get too complicated, as straightforward and simple as possible. And that's what I hope to accomplish, and that's what we as a board, I think, are going to work towards. And that we, and, and I've got, I've got several things that I want to go over with, but, and you can continue there if you want to, but I, I just wanted to, before we got into that, because we have a lot more to talk about, I wanted to give these guys an opportunity to leave if they wanted to. I mean, you can stay here all night and catch this out with us. But I gave everyone an opportunity to ask you questions, and they should have been able to do that up to this point. So I wanted to give you an out right now to get the road if you wanted to, unless someone else has another question for them.
We'll probably take you up on that. We'll probably leave. But once again, just thanks for having us here. We're willing to work with the town any way we can. I know we may not be able to use the proper noise meter good to use, but we'll work with you. I've heard common sense, and then we can all work together on this thing and make it a successful for the town. Thank you.
Thank you guys. We appreciate you. Before we jump into this next discussion about the noise ordinance, as they're leaving with the ticket, right, spreads, these are probably going to be all the. Stretch, these are probably going to be all the other.
Patty, how's the sound?
I can hear you just fine. Okay, so we have all the planning board members back in place, so we will reconvene and continue moving forward. So we've heard a little bit of information so far tonight. And I think, um, just as I was mentioning a few minutes ago, I, I do think that we need to keep things as simple as we can, but still do the best job that we can for the residents of Mills River. And so we have to decide what that looks like. I think we all agree, and one of the reasons that we invited town council to join in with us on this meeting is because of the need for a little bit of direction. You know, Mr. Snyder said, we, we sent this to you with one item and that was noise. Well, we get noise and we see that as a broader entity. So having more direction is helpful. That doesn't mean we will necessarily land in the same place, but we can do our best. So one of the things that, that would interest me from our council members who are here, as well as those who are on Zoom, is to find out as we are trying to put this noise ordinance together, what noise do they want to see addressed? Is it just amplified noise? Is it other types of noise? Is it industrial and or construction noise? Because we've looked at some different things and I think, you know, that's one thing we need clarification on. Then we also need to decide, are we going to be, are we going to quantify that noise? In other words, is it going to be something that's measurable, which would, you know, be decibels? And Mr. Justice just said that's kind of difficult. Or is it going to be a qualified measurement, which is just an observation by someone? So those are some different things that we have got to decide as we move forward and try and put something in writing. So I guess my, my first question would be directed to, I know Mayor Davis is on, Mr. Kasky, you're on, I've got other folks in here is from your perspective, because obviously whatever we as a, a planning board sent to you, you guys have to pass it. Some, so some direction, we, we as a planning board are, have looked at more than simply amplified noise. Because we do feel like there has been some conversation, you know, that, that residents who have been here pre-noise, you know, their residences have been in existence before some of the other industries or, you know, construction projects who are doing construction hall hours of the night and they're being, you know, disturbed by that. So we've, we've looked at some other things besides just amplified noise. So I would like to hear from, from you guys, what, what your direction is, what your preference is that we focus on.
So Sherri, if I might, uh, throw in my two cents, this is Councilman Kasky. When this was kicked down to the planning board by the town council, the discussion that we had was pretty much to give you guys very broad latitude. And my sense coming out of that meeting was, let's give the planning board carte blanche to come up with the best solution as they see it. With regard to Councilman Snyder's comments, I do agree with him that a simple solution is going to be a, probably the best solution. You know, Wachem's razor and all of that. But we have to remember that the members of the planning board are all citizens of the town of Mills River. And that is by intention, that is by design. You all have skin in the game. And so I want to make sure that your input is being considered. And with regard to the comments that were made, we never requested a golf ball. We never requested a beach ball. We never requested a soccer ball. What we requested was your best efforts. And I think that we are going to get that. Just one comment that I would make, you know, from my personal experience. Uh, I used to have a neighbor named Al Williams. And, uh, Mayor Davis might know my neighbor because he's in the same business that she's in. But Al Williams lived next door to me. And, um, he was a compulsive lawnmower. Uh, and by that, I mean, he would mow his yard twice to make sure that he got every stray piece of grass that was sticking up. He would mow it twice, then he would weed eat it. At every, all the way around his house, every bush, he would edge the driveway going all the way down. Uh, and then he would get out his leaf blower. And he would blow all the clippings down into the creek and, and onto, into the woods between our property. The problem with that was that, I understand this was probably good therapy for him. But for me, my daughter's bedroom was right against that side of the house. My office, where I often worked, uh, in the evenings, was right against that side of the house. So the question becomes, you know, if we're going to talk about Al and Brian living next door to each other, where do Al's rights end and my rights begin? Because I have the right to a quiet life. That's why I bought my house where I did. I no longer live there, obviously. But no, nothing in the town code, town ordinances, the state constitution, the federal constitution, nothing gives anyone the right to annoy their neighbors. So as we proceed with this conversation, I want you to know where I stand and, and I, I would love to have some sort of a reasonable solution. But what that solution is, I have no, no, uh, concept, um, that is predetermined coming into this. So I just want to see what your best ideas are and I want to consider that and go forward with it. So I hope that helps you a little bit to understand where I might be coming from. I know other council members have different ideas about this. I have heard the, the, the opinion that we should just consider amplified noise. I don't know that that addresses our need for a quiet community to apply it only to music venues. So, um, those are, those are my, those are my two cents. I'm hoping that the land use plan, as we go forward, the comprehensive plan will help us address some of these issues that, that will come up in the future. Hopefully we won't be putting these type of businesses into residential areas and we can avoid this entirely. But I want to thank you all for all of your hard work. I watch all of your meetings and, um, I just want you to know how much I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kasky. Um, input from others, I would greatly appreciate. Mayor Davis, do you have any input in this conversation? We'd love to hear from you. Go ahead, Jim.
Well, let me give you my take on the whole thing as a planning commission member. I, I just, we, we got two choices, the way I look at it. We can adopt a, or the council can adopt the county as it stands, which we saw a good illustration of it. Or we, they can adopt whatever we come up with. But I just think what we need to do as far as the planning board is concerned, is to come up with a comprehensive plan that covers all the bases. And then council certainly has an option to eliminate what they don't want. Cause they're the one who has to answer to the public eventually. I, I just think we need to have, and, and our draft is pretty comprehensive. I do have some, a couple of questions, uh, on a couple of things in it. But I just think what we come up with should be a comprehensive plan. It covers all the bases because it won't have to come back next year and do it over. You know, we, we've done that time I've been on the board, several things that were adopted, uh, ordinances initially. When the town was incorporated, I understand why it happened because, and I'm glad they did because they got the town incorporated to hit off something that could have happened, that would have been a catastrophe. But, uh, I think what we ought to do is come up with a comprehensive that's unique to Mills River. And then council can tweak, tweak it if they want to. It won't make me mad because that's, that's their job. But I have a couple of questions. If you want some questions on the content of what we're talking, working on now, that I won't, I'd like to clarify on something I'm, I'm not yet online number.
Could I make a general statement before we get to the, the line items? This is Cheryl. Just, I appreciate council's guidance and, and that was helpful though, you know, clearly we, we all have differences of opinion. We're coming from, from different places. But the other thing that strikes me is I think we've gotten more public input, more resident input on this issue of noise than anything I can recall. I'm sure statistically that I may be off on that. But we've had folks that have joined us on Zoom. We've had folks that have, um, sent emails that's Daniel shared with us. So, you know, that's kind of the, we've got our opinion, we've got council opinions and they all vary, but we've had a lot of public input on this. And, you know, I think that's where a lot of our, you know, discussion off of one very narrow issue has come from is from the, the public and, you know, we, we need to take that seriously. Thanks.
Thank you, Cheryl. Before we jump into line by line, because we're, we're originally going to have to do that. Um, I just would like to know if there's any additional, um, comments from council in terms of direction. Otherwise we're just going to go forward with what we think. Do our best as a planning board.
Sue, this is Randy. My personal opinion, and this is just, I'm one of five on the council, is most of our complaints have been amplified music complaints, probably over 90%. I would like to just start there. Let's start small baby steps instead of a broad shotgun approach to all noise in the town. What Jim said makes sense if we can. So if we get a, if we get a recommendation from the planning board and we, this is to Daniel. And we decide just to have a few, just to implement a few of the recommendations. How does that work, Daniel?
You would, you would do just that. So the way that it would work is if the planning board sends you a broader scope than what council was comfortable with, you could narrow it down to what council was satisfied with. The only catch that is you couldn't go beyond what the planning board recommended without another, without another notification requirement.
Okay, but this would be, you would have to notify the public that we were going to do this, right?
Yes, yes. We, there would be a public hearing. It's a tax amendment, just like any other change like that would be. So you would have a public hearing if they comment, of course, and then deliberate and go from there.
So if we did change what they sent us, we would not have to, if, we would not have to re-advertise for another public hearing. If it was, if we just reduced what they sent us, right?
That's right.
Okay. I, I, I still say personally, I would just like to, uh, start with amplified music and, and see where that gets us, but I'm just one of five, so.
Thank you, Councilman Austin. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Ryan.
Hey, Ryan. Good to hear from you. Hope you're feeling better.
I, I am feeling much better. Thank you. Um, so this is, this is just my take on things. This is where I see us. The town needs a, a, a noise ordinance. So my approach would be, and I think it's, it's the lesser of all evils, maybe. I appreciate all the work that's been done by the staff on the drafted ordinance they have. But I keep going back to getting us, getting us there the quickest, the simplest. And so my idea is the, the county has their ordinance. It's a solid ordinance to build on. So I'm not suggesting that we, uh, because it wouldn't, because they wouldn't be able to enforce the additions. But that we as a town adopt the county ordinance as our ordinance's foundation. And for the initial rollout, we add the addition of the amplified noise into that structure. And roll out that as our initial noise ordinance and live with it for six months or whatever to a year. And see what feedback we get as far as what additions we need to make. as far as what additions we need to make or whatever. And we can make those additions as we move forward and grow as a town. And that's just, that's just, that's where I'm coming from to kind of maybe simplify this whole thing, but still accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. Because I think a lot of the complaints we've had, construction and, and industry and stuff, I think some of that is covered in the county ordinance as it is. Maybe not to the extent that maybe Mills River needs it to, but I think we need to find out before we, we try and be too broad in what we're doing.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, so Jim, what did you want to, did you, Jeff, did you want to, okay, I've got a couple, a couple of lights lighting up.
Jeff first and then we'll go to Wayne. Wait, I'm, I'm the new guy. I can wait, but I'd love to make a, a statement, and this is Jeff. Um, okay, I grew up in Mills River, live, you know, 500 feet downhill from where I grew up all my life, except for a little time in the air force. During that time, I lived either on a military base or near one. So noise, um, has been a part of all my life, different types of noise. Uh, two cylinder John Deere tractors, best music I can think of. Um, love hearing those. Cows all around. Um, geese flying over, dogs barking. Um, types of noise that, that I grew up with. Um, doing a little target practicing, never on a Sunday. Um, hunting, that kind of noise, that's kind of what I expect in Mills River. Amplified noise, where I go out on my back porch, I can't leave my windows open at night. Um, that's what disturbs me. Hearing, um, I won't name any names, but hearing businesses that are recently new. Um, hearing that music, it, it does, it does detract from our standard of living. Now, um, neighbor may be washing a car, want to turn up a little music, but that's one thing. That, that doesn't last, but it's that predictable noise where I lose my Friday afternoon outside on the back porch because I have to, I don't get to choose the song I hear. Um, that bothers me as a resident. Um, as a planning board member, um, I would want to see something that, that could be enforced if we choose a noise ordinance. And, and there are other things we might should consider besides just amplified noise. But, you know, I'm in agreement. I, I, I can see it several different ways. I can see if we just started with the amplified noise, to me, that would be a good start. But then again, I've read the, the county's noise ordinance and I don't really have any problems with things in there. But, I don't know, that's just, that's just my background and the perception that I'm taking, looking at this. Is, yeah, one of my biggest concerns is the amplified noise that may go on for several hours a night, you know, in warm weather, when they can be outside. Um, there, uh, we did have a neighbor that had a rather loud vehicle that he ran around the field. He called it a go-kart and it was just, just a little go-kart, but some neighbors didn't like it. And while I was one of the neighbors that didn't like it, I didn't call on him because I didn't want him calling on me if I decided to go, uh, shoot a target a couple of times. But that was disturbing. So there are types of noise. It's artificial besides just, you know, the amplified music that, that I would be happy with including. So, that's, that's pretty much my statement. That's, that's the perspective I'm taking on this. So, thanks.
Wayne, did you want to say something before we move back to Jim?
Well, I, I was really disappointed in, in Councilman Kaski's take on the lawnmower. That's not what we're here to regulate, Mr. Kaski. We're here to hear, to try to cut down the noise of amplified music. And as the council has already told us twice, maybe three times tonight, that's what we need to deal with. So I agree with them. That's what they supposedly told us to work on. And taking 10 pages to do that is not necessary.
Well, finally, Jim, as promised, I'm coming back to you, my friend.
Jeff said everything I'd like to say, pretty much. I too grew up with all those noises he described, except the amplified music. I grew up adjacent, our property, John Fort Benin, Georgia, with the tanks and everything else. And, uh, I think, like Wayne said, the main problem we're here for or because of is amplified music. So, you know, that, you know, all this other stuff is good, so I don't even know if I need to discuss the other, this point. But I, I'll go ahead and ask my question, get it out of the way and can we get the, in, in this proposal we have here, uh, line number 31 and 32, it's talking about abandoned mo, manufactured homes. I'm confused. It says not to be interpreted to include a manufactured home stored or parked in accordance with a valid zoning, valid zoning permit. Uh, what would that be? I mean, if it's abandoned manufactured home, is it going to be parked in accordance with a valid zoning permit? How would that be?
That, I don't, I mean, I'm not sure what your question is relevant to because that, this that we've been given is just pulled from the nuisance chapter and that's not relevant to the noise ordinance. That's something that's already in there. It just happened to be, some of the other changes were on the same pages, so that got printed off as well.
Yeah, I realize that, yeah.
So I don't.
Okay, but I just wanted to get, see if anybody had an opinion on it. But anyway, let's see, do I have anything else that does pertain to noise? I printed off the whole thing, I guess. Wayne said 18 pages. I think I printed off 26 pages. I guess my other question was, uh, it's on line number 174, we're talking about external loudspeakers. I guess that would be in the noise ordinance for. But one thing is, uh, I've heard a lot of comments about, and I think Mills River is the only one who doesn't have a ordinance pertaining to noise from jake breaks from trucks. That, that would be something I'd be interested in. That's all I have right now.
Anyone else want to get this opportunity to put their opinion out there? Statement of position, if you will. Um, I, I do agree, um, that amplified noise is the greatest source of complaints that we receive. And I do think that is the main thing that we need to address. Um, however, we have also received several complaints. Albeit perhaps the same person complaining a couple of times, but I know of a couple of complaints. And, and it, this may be able to be addressed in a different, in a permitting process, perhaps, I'm not sure, Daniel. Um, but where we've had some of our subdivisions that are being built and the noise of construction when they are doing construction beyond those reasonable hours. I don't want to ignore when we have citizens who take the time to email us and express their concerns to us. So I want them to know that, that we've heard them. And if there's a way to address that, you know, obviously, if there's, the people haven't contacted us and taken that opportunity, they must not be bothered by it. But the ones who are, I want to be sure that we're looking at ways to address that as well. So, um, I think pretty much we're all in agreement that the starting point needs to be the amplified noise. I'm dealing with getting something on paper, um, to regulate that. And if you look through what we have on paper, there's a lot there that's not amplified noise. So, um, I guess I will take your, your guidance in this, Daniel. Do we need to go back through this and start striking things that isn't relevant? I mean, are we all in agreement that's our starting point? I mean, tonight is not our starting point, but in getting a more gelled version of what we want to send to council that we start at that point. Or should not start at focus, hone in on that at this point.
This is Cheryl, and my question about if we, if we start with that, I, I've heard a couple of different things that kind of imply, let's get something on paper about amplified noise now, and we'll address the other things later. Um, and I, I guess, or not, or not, you know, we can decide if we're going to address the other issues later. But I guess my question is, is that a prudent way to go? Or is it better to, you know, whatever we're going to do, let's, let's do it now. And I don't, I don't really know that I have an opinion on it yet, but I think that's, that's important. Because if we say, okay, we're just going to address amplified noise now, you know, are we setting ourselves up for going through this again sometime in the future?
This, this boils down to, to the board's direction. We, we can do whatever is the board's pleasure. If the consensus is that we go with just amplified sound, I don't know that there's much to be gained by going through this line by line. I think I just go back and I strike out everything that does not have anything to do with amplified sound. The one question I do have about that, uh, which will help us in, in giving you a new draft is, um, my, my concern has always been enforceability of this. And so I've been, I've been encouraging measurable, um, metrics that we can, we could point to and say, well, you exceeded this decibel reading. However, uh, Mr. Just, Justice pointed out this evening that we should not narrow, narrowly design the ordinance. So that's just what isn't, what is enforceable. So I guess the question to, to you all, or clarification for us from the drafting at this point of view is, do we keep any decibel readings in there or do we leave it to the, to the officer's discretion as was described earlier tonight? Is there a combination thereof that maybe for really egregious violations, there's a reading that we would take? Maybe if it's only during the daytime or something to that effect. That would be helpful to know. And as far as tackling amplified sound now and coming back and doing other things later, there's nothing wrong with that. Um, it, you know, it's, it's more time, it's more process, but it can, it can certainly be done.
This is Cheryl again. Um, another question I had is the, you know, there's some very specific examples of amplified music that, that we're trying, that I think we're trying to address. And my question is, and I really don't know the answer to this, did those businesses as a part of their, um, you know, permitting process or whatever it is, is amplified music a stated part of what they're in business for and what we approved them to be in business for? Or was that something that was added as a good idea after they got folks coming to their, to their primary business? Because, you know, it may be that we could take care of it that way if they're not permitted. And I'm not sure that's the right, the right term, but if they're not permitted to use amplified sound as a part of their operating, their business operating, then maybe we don't have a problem. We just tell them to do what they signed on to do.
I'd have to go back and look at the permits for those. I was not involved in the, um, reviewing of, of anything that's come up recently with the group, with the, with the sound discussion venues. Um, although it's perfectly acceptable in zoning permitting process to get clarification from the applicant as to what specifically they're doing in the building. If, if that was a route the board was interested in entertaining, it'd have to be a standard built into the zoning code that we could then enforce. Um, so for example, uh, we, we all know, common sense wise, if someone's going to amplify their music within their structure or you're outside of it, it might cause them to serve it somewhere else. But simply us knowing that is not sufficient for us to say, you can't do it on your property. There has to be something prohibiting it from happening. So for, so let's just take BK Brewery, Brian Gimble. If, um, BK Brewery comes to town and, um, and they don't, they want to be just a production facility, not have a tap room and not have retail. You know, that's a, that's a different permitting, um, the term for it. It's a different variety of, of use than it would be if it was a sort of a venue, restaurant or retail establishment. Um, and so that would have its own set of standards, meaning they couldn't have, uh, retail sales there. They couldn't have the general public in there. It would just be really be for production employees. So that would eliminate the outdoor amplified music because they wouldn't be permitted to have it in that particular establishment. But if, if they were coming in, BK Brewery was coming into Banner Farm Road and, um, we all know from the complaints that we've heard that music is a concern. We couldn't say to them, you can't do music unless it's in the ordinance that says, you can't do music in certain districts outside of the, outside of the, the building. And, and back to your points, I want to, I just want to reiterate for the public listening. To be fair, we have heard other complaints besides music that is what is getting the most attention right now. But we, we do have, we have had other complaints, mostly about construction noise and the hours of operation for people. And, and also back to your point about hours of construction, that doesn't have to necessarily be in a noise ordinance. It, it could be in the zoning, uh, chapter about, um, general provisions. For example, for, for construction, there would be hours of, of operation in there. So that wouldn't have to be exclusively within, uh, as noise ordinance if that was the board and the council's pleasure.
Well, let me circle my wagon back around now. Okay, so, um, I certainly have my own opinions, but I would like direction from everyone as to moving forward. Do we want to, um, have Daniel and Alan take the document back and eliminate things that are not relevant to amplified sound and start from getting a revised document from there? If they're going to go back and revise this document, I think they need some direction as well in terms of, as he was just talking about, are we doing the, the quantifiable or, um, qualifiable noise? Are we, do we want it measured with, with an instrument or do we want someone's judgment? And, and then we have to decide who's going to do that. Is it going to be staff? Is it going to be new staff? Is it going to be the sheriff's department or is it going to be a combination of both? Like Mr. Starling was talking about where they can go out and give, you know, say, okay, they're in violation and then send that on to town to decide what that civil penalty is. So, um, there's some direction that we need to, to give them if we want them to go back and narrow it down to amplified sound.
I think one, two, three have expressed our opinion already, and I, how you take it, I don't know. Undoubtedly, you don't care for it, but that's one, two, three opinions, right?
Well, three is not a quorum, so, well, we heard Mr. Perry. We know, I think, how, Ryan. What, what is the board's opinion on determining a noise violation? Let's shift gears just a little bit so that I can get some direction.
This is Cheryl. Do we have to have just one standard? Could we say several, a couple or several ways of determining too much noise? It could be a decibel level. It could be the officer's opinion. Does it have to be?
I think that's getting beyond, it's, it's, personally, I think that should be more complicated. I think if we can just say, this is the way we're going to do it, that's going to keep it.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's certainly simple that way, but is it effective? I'm just throwing out ideas, that's all.
Yeah, I got you. Any other?
Well, I think we need, uh, whatever we do, a measurable standard. If you can say if and You can say if and but baby and all this all day long, and that, that just brings up more conflict and questions as you go along. If we're going to do something, let's give it a standard to operate by.
This is Wayne. I agree with that, Jim, to the fact that, okay, this sheriff deputy that gets the 911 call, he does not have that piece of equipment with him. He's sitting here in town hall, belonging to the council, belonging to the town. I, I would rather take that deputy's opinion of whether it's a noise than some piece of technology that may be correct or not correct.
Agreed to a certain extent, I guess, that certainly the deputy's opinion to me is, is, is great. Maybe we, but I don't want to see a half a dozen different possibilities. It could be this, 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 two, two possibilities. A deputy's opinion are measured with the, the proper noise meter, which, like you said, unless they, I don't know if the sheriff's department has the noise meters or not, but that could be one option for them, so they wouldn't get an argument. Well, yes, this is what it read. Or we have a trained deputy here, and he was just outside of the boundaries and he was blasting him out. But of course, you know, loud noise or loud music is, gets down to where it's a matter of opinion, too. What I would consider loud music, a lot of people wouldn't.
And two deputies might see it differently, too, just the luck of the draw, whichever one rolls up.
Well, it may be something like that, rather than leaving it so subjective that it not be, is it too loud? Because everyone's definition of loud is different, but simply, can it be heard at this point on someone's property? I mean, that's not so subjective. I mean, that's pretty clear cut. Just throwing ideas out.
That's true. It's like I said, if I can hear over here on 191 inside with my windows closed, if I can identify the song, the vocals on the song, I can understand the, the subwoofer, and that could be easily solved if just turn it down, but that's neither here nor there. But if I can sit inside with windows closed, and I can identify the song from the vocals, it's too loud, because it's a long ways from where it's originating from.
Cheryl, I have one more thought. This is Wayne. I, I think you, you still need to have your permitting process in that that amplified music.
So you're talking about what we discussed about special events that they want to work outside the bounds of what is allowed. They could get a permit to do so a certain number of times, and we would have to work through those details as well.
Absolutely. I'm not, though that was the issue.
I agree with that.
Okay, so we have agreement there on that from Mr. Cantrell. Mr. Snyder, comment?
Is that microphone on? Sorry, can't hear you.
Roger's microphone is not on, please.
We're fixing.
You guys are quick on the draw. Holy cow.
Okay, is that, going back, is that in Mills River Park, we do not allow amplified music. The only way that a group, organization, whatever you want to call it, can have amplified music, it has to come to the town council, and we have to approve it. Another point, Jim, I agree with you, is that, and I'm going to pick on Bold Rock, is that they was out there playing one night, this has been a while ago. I live way up South Mills River. Gail was washing dishes in the kitchen. She hollered for me. So I come upstairs, walk down the back deck. Now, keep in mind, Bold Rock's over here. I live up South Mills River. I could sit there on the bench, on the deck, and sing along with them. Now, is that, I can only imagine what Sherry goes through, Ms. Wilson goes through, you know, and so forth. So that was another reason that I pushed this to go to the planning board. I think you guys have got some all good ideas, is that I appreciate you doing all the legwork for the council, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. So I think what we're looking at right now is I've heard from people who have a very clear opinion, and those of you who don't are willing to go whichever way with this. So I think at this point, what we need to do is send this back for a little bit of, of work with a primary focus on looking at the amplified sound. And I, I know that's 152.25, and I don't know what other sections are relevant to that. I'm sure there's, you know, lots of it there. Perhaps give us options to look at both with measurement and a person, a person's opinion, if you will, of determining a violation, then we can look at that and talk about those more, what seems to work best with the revised version of what we get. We also need to have something included in terms of where enforcement is going to lie. Can planning board give some direction to Daniel regarding that in terms of, is it going to be a deputy? Is it going to be town staff? Or a combination of both? What are you guys thinking in that respect?
Right now, it's, it's included in the chapter as a combination of both, which I think makes sense, especially given Captain Starling's information tonight about the sheriff's willingness to work with us on this. So anyway, that's in the text.
Is that 152.91? And then two.
May I say something? This is Ryan.
Yes, Ryan, go ahead.
Could they maybe, I, I'm not trying to put more work on them, but just for the sake of maybe our next meeting, can they give us what just a noise ordinance thing would look like without all the other stuff that, that's in the 18 pages or whatever? Just so we can see what noise, the, the amplified noise thing is by itself.
That's what we were just talking about, asking them to bring something back to us with the focus on the amplified noise.
Okay.
And what else do you see that, that we need to address, Daniel, that you need direction from us regarding?
I, I think that that's all. We will, we will strip it down to the amplified noise and the associated enforcement procedures with that. We'll include an option to include metrics like decibel readings, and then one that's left to the code enforcement officer, or town representative or deputy, or other law enforcement officers discretion. And then, of course, again, the, the same enforcement procedures that would go, go along with that. That, that's what I've heard from this, is that accurately reflects what everyone thinks we should do? This is summary of, of the discussion.
I think, like Wayne said, I'm Jim Foster, of course, make sure we have the permit
Oh, yes.
line in the.
Thank you, Jim. Good point. I meant to say that.
That would take care of a lot of things. I don't think, except for on this property here at Town Hall, this is the only place in Mills River that outside amplification is discouraged, right? So that, that should be, that would cover a lot of things if we, if the permit thing is included.
This is Cheryl. Jim, are you talking about permits for, like, one-off events? Like if, or we, if I understood, if I remember correctly, the permitting that we talked about was for a specific event that happens once or once a year or something like that? Is that, is that what you're, what you're saying?
Well, what we said, external loudspeakers operating or permitting the operation of any mechanical device or loudspeaker without a permit to do so is prohibited in a fixed or movable position exterior to any building or mounted on any aircraft or motor vehicle to such a manner that the sound thereof is in excess of the maximum decibel level as described in this subchapter. That's what we had in this.
So the permit was originally intended to allow someone to exceed the limits of the, of the, of the code. So we would need something like that in place if, if the desire was to allow people to have that flexibility. If you don't want to offer that exemption for people, you simply remove the permit process altogether and standard stand alone. If you violate them, you're in violation of the code.
So that my special permit or permitting process might be for a special celebration or an, an event here at Town Park. I don't think that would be intended for our breweries and such to get a permit that allows them every weekend out of the summer to exceed the standards that we put in place. That would not be the specified purpose of that, I don't think.
Well, I, I guess the follow-on question I had was, do we want to put that into the permitting process when a new business comes to town, that if noise making is part of their business operations, that that be a part of their business permit or their building permit or, or something or other, so that we know upfront BK Brewery is going to plan to have live outdoor music Friday, Saturday and Sunday nights from these hours to those hours?
I do know, and I, and I don't have my, I didn't bring my book of ordinances, but I do know that in the light industrial district, it does allow for certain secondary purposes. And I'm assuming that's by right. And if it is by right, I don't know that it necessarily has to be mentioned in the building permit. Is that correct, Daniel?
It wouldn't have to be mentioned if they were doing something that was part of the normal, everyday operations of the facility. But if they were trying to add on a secondary use, we would need to know that when the permit's being issued.
So if I can, this is Jeff. If I can understand that, so if that is an allowed secondary use, they would be able to exceed the thresholds in the noise ordinance? Or would they still be required to follow the noise ordinance, but they could have outdoor music?
No, that would still be required to follow the ordinance.
Okay. And, and one more thing from Jeff. If we start adding exceptions, this is going to be a much longer discussion, et cetera, but I kind of would like to see an exception for the chimes in Mills River Church. I grew up hearing that and can hear them now, and I don't see that that's really, you know, it's amplified, but I don't think that's what we're trying to address.
I didn't realize those were amplified.
Well, it's, they may have updated it in the years, that it was a record with a speaker up in the, up in the steeple there.
Okay, so do any of the requests that we've given to you, do they require any sort of emotion, or do we just, I didn't think so?
No, no, we'll just go back to the drawing board and make these changes and bring it back to you on the 16th, that you can look at it as a pared down version of what you see tonight. And we can, we can go from there.
And I know it might be a tedious and long process for you, and I do appreciate the work that you've put into that. But the sooner that we could get a copy of that ahead of the next meeting, so we have more time to come prepared instead of trying to sit and read it as we go, that would be very, very helpful. Even if you get a page or two down, I want to send that ahead of time. You know, I would love to, personally, for me, would love to get that ahead of time. That would be helpful. Okay, so I think that that's where we'll leave the old business for tonight, is we're going to send that with all the, the requests that we've made for them to work on, paring that down, bringing something back, and we'll discuss that a little bit further on the 16th. So we'll move on. There is no business, no new business listed on our agenda for tonight. So we will go to additional items. Is there, are there any additional items or things from council or the visioning process that you'd like to share?
Yes, thank you. On February 17th at 3:30 and 6:30 PM, we're doing workshops very similar to what we did last fall for the comprehensive plan. This will include not only the comprehensive plan, but the Parks and Recreation Plan that we've been working on for the last several months, as well as just general updates. As you all know, things have been very busy with regards to text amendment, text amendments, permitting in general. We just want to take the opportunity to get everyone to update on what the town's been doing, where things stand. And then we'll give a quick snippet about the budget and where the, the schedule for that. So again, that's February 17th at 3:30 or 6:30 PM. It'll be the same information. You can sign up at makingmill river dot com. And again, that's February 17th at 3:30 and 6:30 PM. We are hoping to do some controlled in-person input later on, where we would do like a drop-in session, have this room open for several hours during the day, have maps available for people to look at, and just limit the attendance so that there's only a handful of folks in here at any given time. We don't have the logistics ironed out for that yet, but that is something that we're, we're trying to do. I think it's really important, at least for the mapping portion of this, for people to be able to see it and draw on a map and that sort of thing. So stay tuned for that. It'll be, it'll be a few weeks, but that's on the radar right now.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and it's time for the magic motion. Mr. Carlin moves that we adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Foster. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And we are adjourned. See you guys the next time.
Thank you, everyone.